For the City of Santa Barbara Planning Commission, Ms. Rodriguez, would you please call the roll?
Commissioner White.
Here.
Commissioner Lodge.
Here.
Commissioner Justice, absent. Commissioner Jacobs. Commissioner Bartlett. Commissioner Thompson.
Here.
Chair Larson.
Here. Thank you very, very much. Preliminary matters, requests for continuances, withdrawals, postponements, or any ex-agenda items. Danny?
Madam Chair, I did want to announce that we canceled the lunch meeting for today, but we are having a lunch meeting next week to make up for it.
Okay.
Which wouldn't normally be our practice, because it would be the second meeting of the month, and we'll be talking about the same thing that we were going to talk about today, which was designing and implementing sidewalk corridor improvements along Milpa Street. That's a discussion only.
Thank you very much. You want to go ahead?
I can't remember if I said this last time, 617 Bradbury has been appealed by the applicant.
Right, I heard that. Is there any chance, maybe at the lunch meeting, we could get an update on the Los Pecidos project of Lee?
Oh, the annexation.
Veronica Meadows?
Yeah, Veronica Meadows, yes.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, thank you very much. And so, any other announcements? Any from us? Okay. Oh, do you have any, Vendi?
No, just for afterwards.
Oh, okay. Fine. So now, oh, excuse me?
Sorry, one last thing.
Sure.
It's on the agenda, but I wanted to announce it as well. On August 20th, the Planning Commission heard 803 North Milpa and continued it, date uncertain, to today, but we're not ready, so it's on the agenda. It's going to be heard on November 5th.
All right, so when it comes up, we'll have a motion to... Do we need a motion for that?
Mr. Vincent says no.
No, okay, good. Okay, thank you for that. So, that being said, I'll open public comment. At this time, we can take comment for up to two minutes on anything that's not on the agenda today. So, we have a very streamlined agenda. I do want to mention that during this time, that I have been asked by a member of the public to inquire about the absence or the removal of benches on State Street. So, maybe that's something that we could address at the lunch meeting, that they're progressively being removed. There's some missing outside Pascucci, and the 600 block of State is looking sparse. So, I thought I'd mention that, and maybe you could check into that. Thank you. All right, so I'll close public comment. There'll be no one coming forward. And so, the continued item is again continued, and that gets us to the environmental hearing, which is for Hillside House, 1235 Veronica Springs Road. That would be Piker Group Architects. And I see we have, yes?
Peter Lawson will be giving.
Yeah, Peter Lawson here. So, Mr. Lawson?
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the commission. Today's hearing is an environmental scoping hearing for the Hillside House initial study. The purpose of the hearing is to receive comments from public agencies, community interest groups, members of the public, and the Planning Commission on the scope of the environmental impact report. The project site is located at 1235 Veronica Springs Road, and is near the intersection of Porto Suelo and Los Pecidos. Surrounding areas are the newly approved Veronica Meadows to the south, and some open property to the west, and Palma Road further west. Current development on-site is a total of almost 48,000 square foot development. The main use and development of the site is the Hillside House, which provides an intermediate care for up to 59 clients, and is a 24-hour care facility. In addition to the development on-site for the Hillside House, there are several storage buildings, the Jody House, which is for essentially an outpatient facility, and a single-family residence, and several abandoned structures. And as you can see in this overhead, that the surrounding development, mainly to the north and northeast, is a single-family development, and then more open development to the west under agriculture, and then further to the south, down below here, is more hillside area that is right now an open space. And on ground, we have the Hillside House. Merely to the right is the Harmony House, which will remain and be relocated on-site, Jody House, Royal Borough Creek, and abandoned house over here, as well as some storage So, the proposed project will include removing all of the development on-site except for the residents, construct 120 new residential units, and 12 would be dedicated to Hillside House, 28 low-income rental, 11 inclusionary, and 70 market rate. A 6,700 square foot administrative building will be exclusively for Hillside use, a new public road with parking. It'll include restoring Royal Borough Creek on the project site. Two conservation easements will be provided, and an offsite emergency road in storm drain will also be part of the project. So, the overall site plan shows the two conservation easements, proposed public road, a multi-use path, bike and pedestrian, and the road will be realigned to line up a Veronica So, development includes an approximate 100-foot setback from top of bank to the road restoration within that 100-foot setback. Merely to the left here is the offsite emergency access and bike path. Five private driveways with sort of development. The 700 square foot administration building will be located towards the front of the project, and a empty bus stop, which currently serves the site, will be provided in front of the administration building. So, it's a shot of the emergency road and bike path. It is the 60-foot right-of-way that is a recorded easement in favor of the city for access, but not yet improved. A paved emergency access would be put in that would handle emergency vehicles only, and also provide a multi-use trail from Palma Road through to the Hillside House. The site is mostly served by the city, except for water. Water is provided right now by Glitter Water District, and as part of the project, they will detach from Glitter Water District and hook in with the city's water. Right here, offsite, you can see where the center line is of the currently recorded road, which hooks right into Palma Road. Reclaim Water, there's a reclaim water line along Veronica Springs Road, and as part of the project, they would do most of landscaping with reclaim water. So, walking through the environmental review process steps, we have issued a notice of EIR preparation. The initial study provides a proper scope of the EIR. Today, we're having a scoping hearing. The three-day public comment period will end on October 15th at 4:30, and that is a Thursday. And once environmental review, the comment period closes, we're taking all comments regarding the scope of the initial study, and then at that point, we'll retain environmental consultant, who'll prepare a draft environmental impact report. And once that is done, we'll go ahead and circulate that for public comment, have an environmental hearing, and then prepare the final EIR, including written response to the comments, and come back to your commission for final EIR certification, as well as action on the project permit. Purpose of environmental studies, to analyze the project environmental impacts, provides proper scope of the EIR, explains why impacts are not included in the EIR. It also provides mitigations to be incorporated in the EIR, and this gives us an opportunity for public input on the EIR scope. So, initial study that we prepared, we found the following categories required no further A number of reports were prepared by the applicant that were viewed by various members of city staff. The project does include a restoration plan to improve the biological habitat on-site. Report was prepared on both historic structure, as well as any potential archaeological resources, and conclusion was that there were no archaeological, no not archaeological resource on-site. And as mentioned earlier, the Harmony House will be retained on-site. A stormwater plan was designed for the project, and the applicant will provide more information in their presentation on the stormwater. And the final area that will be looked at in the EIR is transportation. And the main area we look at in transportation are the long- and short-term vehicle trips. In the surrounding area of Los Pecidos and Moudock and other areas, there are some impacted intersections, so the project will analyze those trips, as well as construction trips. So, public comment period is for three days, began on the 16th of September, will end on October 15th, and you can go ahead and submit written comments to me at PO Box 1990, Santa Barbara, 93102, or you can go ahead and email me, and I'll go ahead and leave this slide back up when I'm done. So, recommendation is to receive comments from the public and the Planning Commission on the scope of the EIR. Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right.
And, Madam Chair, sorry.
Yes, that's all right.
One quick thing is, we did receive a total of six comment letters from the members of the public, and Julie has gone ahead and distributed those to you.
Thank you. Yes, we have those. Thank you. Okay, now we'll have the presentation by our applicant.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the commission. I'm Lisa Plowman with Piker Group Architects. I'm the planning manager there.
Welcome.
Thank you. I wanted to let you know that we do have some of our consultants here today. We have Dan Mead, our biologist. We have Scott Shell, our transportation planner, Greg Denlinger, who is our geologist, and Craig Stewart, who is with Penfield &amp; Smith, and he handled all the stormwater management and drainage. So, he'll, he's going to make part of the presentation today. And Dede Piker, the architect. Here's the, just a perspective of the entrance to Hillside House. This is the proposed administration building and community building. So, the project team, I wanted to explain a little bit about, this is the presentation. We're going to talk about the project team, the mission of Hillside House and the Housing Authority, the project purpose and objectives, the history of the project, because we've been in the process for quite some time, the early environmental analysis that was conducted to help design the project and the proposed project. So, the team is Hillside House and the Housing Authority of the County of Santa Barbara. Those are the two, the joint applicants for this particular project. The consultant team, as I mentioned, is Piker Group, Penfield, Katie O'Reilly Rogers, Foodgro, Alt House Mead, Swanson Hydrology and Geomorphology, ATE Preservation Planning Associates, Stone Archaeological Consulting, and BDC is consulting as well. There was a question that came up when we were on the site visit, what the relationship between Hillside House and the Housing Authority would be. And this may be a curiosity for the Planning Commission, that it's the county housing authority rather than the city housing authority, but this site is currently located in the county, and when the project was initially conceived, it was conceived between these two applicants, and the city housing authority has graciously indicated that they're more than happy to have the county housing authority involved. So, during the entitlement and construction process, the Housing Authority and Hillside House are co-developers and tax credit partners. In post-construction, when the project is completed, the Housing Authority is going to maintain and manage the 28 rental, low-income rental units, and the 12 Hillside House units. They are going to do income certifications and verify Section 8 eligibility for some of the Hillside House residents, and then Hillside House will continue to provide all of the rehabilitation services and social services to the residents that they currently So, Hillside House's mission is to provide a home that supports their residents' efforts to maximize their physical, cognitive, social, emotional abilities, so that they can achieve the highest individual level of independence in an environment where people are treated with dignity and respect. That's their, that's their objective and their mission as they carry on into the future. The Housing Authority's mission is founded on the belief that decent, safe, and sanitary housing is central to the physical and emotional health and the productivity and self-esteem of the people it serves. I won't continue on, but essentially, we know what their goal is, is to get housing on the ground for people who can't otherwise afford it. This is, since you don't know much about the county housing authority, I'm guessing, we wanted to give you an example of one of their recently constructed projects, so you can see the quality of development that they engage in. And we'll have more information as this project progresses on that. So, the project purpose and objectives are, one, to update the aging facilities of the Hillside House. That facility was built in the 1950s, at a different era, and under a different building code even, and it's in need of repair, and it's quite institutional, as you probably noticed when we were touring the facility this week. Their goal, obviously, is to maintain a high standard of care for their residents that they have. Many of these residents actually have been there all of their life. They came there as young children or infants in the 1950s. Another key component is neighborhood integration of the residents. This is something that, or a direction that many of these organizations have been moving in, and there's mandates from the state that are tied to funding. They've found that residents that are living in integrated neighborhoods with non-disabled people do better than residents that are living in institutional facilities, and so they're really encouraged. All these organizations are very encouraged to integrate these residents. The fortunate thing about this project is these residents will be able to stay on the site that they've grown up on. Another key component is securing long-term funding for the Hillside House. That was how this project was initially conceived. Right now, the Hillside House gets the majority of its money from Medi-Cal and Medicare. As you can see here, it's 85%, but 15% of their funding comes from grants and fundraising, and that 15% has been very hard to come by over the last 15 years. And the Hillside House has had to dip into their endowment, and that has been slowly been reduced. And so, with the development of this project, and the sale of the market rate units that are proposed, that will create a larger endowment for the organization, and the income stream from the rental units will help keep them flush with cash to be able to provide the services that they do, the much-needed services. Another objective was to create a mix of housing opportunities in a neighborhood on the site, which includes housing for the special needs of Hillside House residents, affordable housing, which will both be in rental units and the inclusionary units, and then market rate units. We also were very concerned about making sure that the project was designed sensitively, because we know that the Los Pecidos Valley has a lot of biological resources, and it was important to make sure that those were protected. We also wanted to make sure that we designed a neighborhood that was compatible with the existing neighborhood. The density on this site, while it's clustered to protect the resources and to identify the most buildable areas, it does meet the density that's in the existing neighborhood now, which is about 5.1 units per acre. The other objective was to maintain and share the natural beauty of the site by preserving open space, dedicating conservation easements, and putting a public trail through the property, so that the neighbors could come through and enjoy the site. The history. The history goes back to 2003, and that was the beginning of when exploratory conversations happened between the applicant and the city and the county. At that point in time, the city was very eager to see the project processed through its jurisdiction rather than the county, even though it's within the county's boundaries. And I think after many meetings, it was agreed that this was probably a good idea, and thinking that Los Pecidos Valley will logically be annexed into the city at some future date. In November 2003, we submitted a PRT, and in March, a PC concept review was held. Sort of in an unprecedented step, I think, the applicant and the project team really wanted to come up with a design that worked for that site, and knew that the Planning Commission would have a lot of input, and would probably give a lot of constructive input in terms of what would be acceptable. And so, we went through, over several months, three PC work sessions with iterations of designs, and ultimately ended up with a design that is very similar to what you see in the environmental document and what I'll be showing you here today. But there was a lot of effort put into responding to PC comments and making sure that those issues were addressed before we submitted the formal development application. And some of that is actually the pre-analysis that we did, and I'm going to go through that. We finally submitted an application in May 2006. In February and May of 2008, we were at ABR and received favorable comments from them, with some changes to the project design. We were deemed complete March of this year, and here we are with our scoping hearing. So, it's been quite, quite a trip so far, and I think we've got a ways to go, but we're hoping to see completion within a year and a half or so. So, the early environmental analysis was something that we engaged in before we even came up with any designs. And that was a constraints analysis, understanding where all the physical constraints were on the site, and identifying where all the natural resources were. And we completed a number of environmental studies to get to that point, which allowed us to create the design that we have today, and with Planning Commission comments, that's respectful of resources, and also allowed us to design a project that could avoid or premitigate for many of the impacts that could potentially occur. So, I wanted to just identify a couple of the main comments that came out of the PC work sessions. The initial project that had been submitted for the PRT was a 176-unit project that had a number of three-story units to achieve that density. And one of the key comments was a suggestion that reducing the massing would be important on the site. They were interested in seeing some smaller buildings, minimizing the views from Veronica Springs Road. We initially had come in with a circulation plan that was a loop plan that had some development on the site, on the south of the road, that would be adjacent to the creek, and the commission suggested that we change that circulation plan and have an entrance that came in along the south, and that finger roads, as Peter showed, that would access the units. And then another comment about ensuring the protection of Royal Borough Creek, and asked us to increase, consider increasing the setback. And each of these comments were taken to heart and included in the design that you'll see before you today. So, I'll quickly go through this. I don't want to spend a lot of time, because I know you've been to the site, but this just shows, here's the site boundary here, and gives you an idea of what the neighborhood looks like. Here's another aerial that shows the, these are the existing facilities here. Spicidos Road and Veronica Springs Road. This is an ownership map, just so you can get an idea of where the Parks family property is in the school district, and where the road will be. This is the emergency access bike trail that will cut through their property. It's an easement that the city already has, and the blue line is Royal Borough Creek. Some site photos, it's the existing facility, Harmony House, that will be restored. This is a picture of the site that's undeveloped. There's the abandoned house, Jody House, Campanel Hill. So, the key elements of the project are that there are 121 homes, 42% are affordable. There are the 12 Hillside House apartments, the 28 rental units that are managed by the Housing Authority, 11 inclusionary units, and 70 market rate units. The 6,700 square foot administration building and community building, which was where all the rehabilitation will go on with the clients that Hillside House currently has. We have a repairing setback that ranges between 90 and 100. It's mostly 100, but dips down in the area where we have to connect into the city's easement for that emergency access. We're planning a restoration of Royal Borough Creek for over 800 feet of its extent that cuts through the property, the public trail along the creek. There's a good deal of open space and trails that actually are throughout the project site. And I think this is important to note, through clustering of the development, 77% of that site remains in, is undeveloped or open space. 11% are the homes or Hillside House, and 12% are roads and paving. There are two conservation easements, as Peter pointed out, which total roughly 14 acres, and the project site is consistent with county zoning, or the project is consistent with county zoning and pre-annexation zoning. We've taken great pains to make sure that the public views of the development are minimized, so what is viewed from Veronica Springs Road at the entrance is a string of one, what it looks like as one-story buildings. They are actually more than one story, but because of the topography and the way the site is designed, or the project is designed, that's the view, and I have an elevation of that. And that we disperse the three-story buildings throughout the site in areas that are not really visible from Veronica Springs Road, with the exception of Harmony House, which is the historic building on-site and has a third-story element to it. The craftsman architecture is consistent with the historical architecture that you see on the, with respect to the Harmony House. This gives you a full view of the site plan, and then here's a blown-up version. And I just wanted to, you know, as you can see, the main entrance road here, these are the finger roads that provide access to the units. You can see the abundant landscaping and open space. And then I wanted to just give you an idea of where the two-story units were. So, this depicts them. The majority of the units are two stories, and then these are the three-story units. And this shows the setback along the creek, and then the open space that's along the creek there as well. I just want to provide a couple of little elevations for you, so you get an idea of what the architecture is like on the site. These are four of the building types that you'll see. Most of these are two-story. This building shows a third-story element. You can see that it's tucked into the roof line rather than being a full third story, which is the common development pattern on the site. This shows the view from Veronica Springs. So, this is the actual elevation of the buildings, but this is not what will be seen from Veronica Springs. This is what will be seen from Veronica Springs, because of the way the topography climbs as you climb up the road. So, you can see that they look like one-story elements, although these are two-story buildings. And then you can see just the top of the fifth unit there. There's an elevation of the administration and community building and the restored Harmony House. And here's the creek restoration plan. This is a graphic that's out of Swanson's report, that shows the area that will be restored in green, and also shows the area of the banks that will be laid back. That's one critical part of the restoration plan, was there are very vertical banks along that creek right now, and as a way to minimize erosion in the future, the city staff worked with us and sought to have some of those banks have their angle of repose changed, and I've got, next slide will show that. You can see here, this is the existing slope, the bank, and here's how it will be laid back. It'll be two to, two or three-to-one slope here, and then here's another cross-section that shows you how it will be laid back. That whole area will be restored with native vegetation, and the non-natives and invasive species will be removed. This shows the, demonstrates the location of the conservation easements. And then drainage. I wanted Craig to come up and walk you through the stormwater management plan and the drainage, because I know that was an important issue that came up at the site, and there were a lot of questions about it, so.
Please introduce yourself.
Madam Chair.
Brief as possible.
My name is Craig Stewart, from Penfield &amp; Smith, engineer. I'm a civil engineer. One of the most important things about the drainage for this project is that we worked really hard to meet the requirements of the stormwater management plan for the City of Santa Barbara, as it changed through the, through the years. And we do meet those requirements. The stormwater on-site is retained, detained, and filtered as required. We use a suite of various low-impact development approaches to do this. Through our drainage plan, we meet the stormwater management plan, but we also go, to a great extent, to protect the banks of the, of Royal Borough Creek. Currently, the, there's a large amount- Currently, the, there's a large amount of water that sheets across the site and goes just directly over the, over steepened banks of the creek, and we minimize that amount of water so that there's less erosion. And the project provides onsite and off-site stormwater management such that there's better flood protection on the site. This diagram indicates some of the stormwater management, stormwater quality management approaches that we're using. For instance, over here on the west side of the site, we have, we have a bioswale. We also have bioswales along the toe of the, toe of the slope here. We are, we have permeable paving at a number of different locations, as well as taking opportunities throughout the site to collect and infiltrate the stormwater that comes off the site in these vegetated areas. And we have a detention area and bioretention areas throughout the site. The project was a challenge. It has a significant amount of off-site tributary area. This area in red here drains across and through the site, which is located right here. And so, the existing drainage pattern, if you look, this, these areas through here all drain into Arroyo Borough Creek. The blue areas and the gray area drains across the steepened banks. And then, there's a fair amount of area that drains down into Veronica Springs Road and sheets across and finally gets into the creek. Under the proposed drainage pattern, we reduce the amount of water that's going over the bank here and filter and discharge some of the off-site water down the westerly side of the, of the project into the creek in a controlled manner so that it reduces the erosion. And this portion here is picked up with a storm drain system, filtered, retained, detained, and discharged in a non-erosive manner downstream of these homes here and downstream of these homes here, back into the creek, so that it reduces the flooding potential. We've designed the systems here to operate for, instead of a 25-year level of protection, for 100-year level of protection. Sorry. One of the items that the stormwater management plan also covers is that the post-construction peak flow and volume is, is less than or equal to the pre-construction flow in volume.
And we've achieved that.
And we have achieved that.
Thank you.
This is the last slide. I know you want to move on to your hearing. I just wanted to conclude with the recap that we believe that the early environmental analysis and design and work that we did with the Planning Commission helped to reduce the scope of this document and down to the transportation and circulation issues that are discussed in the initial study. And then, again, just to kind of cap off on what the main objectives are of this project was really to create a unique community that updated the existing facilities for the disabled residents at Hillside House, integrated them into a neighborhood, created financial stability for that organization, provided a mix of housing opportunities for our community, 42% which are affordable, and that's, that's a pretty high rate in today's development world, and respects the environmental resources on site. That's it. And we're happy to answer any questions. As I mentioned, we have our consultants here, so if issues come up on a particular subject matter, we'll be able to respond.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Oh, you read my mind. Thanks. All right. We're going to open public comment. If there's anybody here who wishes to make a comment, please get a green slip in the back of the room, fill it out, give it to Mr. Cotto here, and you will be called to speak. So, asking you to keep your comments to two minutes if possible. If you're representing an organization, get a little extra. And I will call your name, and then, I'll call the person who follows you. So, first, we'll have Judy Arias, and she is representing the Hidden Valley Association. So, Ms. Arias, and she'll, followed by Mickey Flax.
I'm Judy Arias. The Board of Directors of the Hidden Valley Association met last night and expressed, wished me to come and express some of our concerns. These will also be submitted to you in writing later on. When this whole project started, the basis was the financial need of the project. And so, they would like to see a financial feasibility study included in the environmental impact report. Regarding the density, you have areas in the, on this 25 acres that have 30-degree slopes, and as such, there is under the slope density ordinance restrictions on what can be built, not necessarily giving credit to jam or place it into a flat area. So, that needs to be addressed. The city also has a policy of downtown having density, and this is a very high-density project. I would also ask that the number of bedrooms be calculated in these projects, because bedrooms translates to people. And we are also concerned about the precedent that this sets for adjacent property, because if they have it, why can't I have it? When looking at the roads, you have Veronica Springs Road, which is a substandard county road without curbs, sidewalks, extremely narrow. If you have parking on each side of the road, you can hardly get through. I would remind you that if our area cannot evacuate on Modoc Road, this is the road we have to take to get out, and it is substandard. We won't get out if there's a fire. We went through that last Thursday. The other item I bring up to you is the fact of Cali, Elasimigos 101, Modoc, and the expansion of all of that problem, and the study that's supposedly going on to release the traffic from Mission Intersection up to the Los Pecidos Intersection so that they can cross the freeway and get into the Cottage Hospital. All these issues have to be taken into account when this project and any project in the valley is considered. I would also remind you that you have a very large project pending under Ealing's Park, and that has a lot of activities, which is going to bring traffic into both intersections of Cliff Drive and Los Pecidos and the other side. We need to address these. The people who live in this area need to know that we have access and we can get safely out of this area. The association is also concerned about the road to Palermo. I understand it's an emergency, and that's good. That's, that's a positive thing. However, I am, and they are concerned that it would become a permanent road, and this will be a shortcut that people will take to avoid the intersection of 101, et cetera, et cetera. And so, they are really concerned about what happens with this road. I think the traffic impacts are too low. I disagree with the study on the noise, not because Hillside House is going to create the noise, but they are going to get the noise from the events that happen at Ealing's Park. We're looking at lighted soccer fields, a bicycle racing track, et cetera, et cetera, amphitheater, outdoor speakers. In our area, we can hear anything that goes on in Valverde. We can hear the speakers from Earl Warren Showgrounds, and so, noise to these people is going to be a concern, and it should be addressed. We ask that the city consider planning the valley in total. They have chosen not to, but you have to take into account the fact that we now have Valverde coming in with 40-some units. We have Hillside House. We have Ealing's Park. And all these things impact what we have in the valley, and they need to be addressed because it just doesn't flow out as gently as everybody would want. So, I appreciate your giving me the time, and I would tell you again that you need to look at all of the combined projects that are going on in this valley, because there are severe impacts. And this is an area where there's high fire hazard area and other problems. And that is necessary for those residents that are now exist, living there. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mickey Flax, followed by Brad Froling.
Good afternoon. I know it's been a long day for you folks. My name is Mickey Flax. I'm on the Board of Commissioners of the Housing Authority of the County of Santa Barbara. I get $50 a meeting, whether this project is approved or not, so I have no stake in it, other than I think it's a good idea. I just wanted to say something about the benches. If the benches are removed, I will again have to sit on the ground at State Street, on State Street, which is not a pretty sight. So, I urge you to keep the benches that are there.
Well, thank you.
Back to Hillside House. As you saw, the mission for the Housing Authority of the County of Santa Barbara is to help provide housing for those who can't afford it. This, of course, includes the residents of Hillside House, but it also includes those who would rent the other apartments that are included in this proposal. 42% of the housing in this proposal is affordable housing. When Galletta's plan talked about 50%, the state, which is only a little more, the state Housing Commission said it couldn't be done and rejected their housing element on that basis. They don't know what the Housing Authority of the County of Santa Barbara can do. We can, along with a developer who cares, both Hillside House and an architect who cares, Denny Pikeert, we can provide 42% of a project for affordable housing. This in itself furthers the goals of Plan Santa Barbara. It furthers the goals that I think most people in the community have, to increase both rental housing and specifically affordable housing. In terms of design, I mentioned Architect Pikeert, the Pikeert Group. They designed the Zenich housing in Santa Maria, which is, I think, 30 or 40 units of housing, something like that. The city of Santa Maria was very cautious about it. They hadn't had that kind of development. And now, it is, it just won an award from the National Association of Housing and Redevelopment Officials, a very competitive award, as a beautifully designed and appropriate project. It is the best housing, I think, in the city of Santa Maria, certainly the best housing on the block. And that is the kind of housing that the Housing Authority does, and we welcome the opportunity to do it here. There will be a traffic impact that is probably unmitigatable, and that's why there should be an EIR on the traffic to see what can be done to make it better. But everything else that, that an EIR concerns itself with has been evaluated and met. We have done, I think, an admirable job in dealing with all of the objections and all of the problems that were raised. Please help this project go forward. There's a lot of complaint in this election year that projects are going by so quickly and getting approval without complete review. I remind you that this started in 2003, and I think that we have complete review. Please move it forward.
Thank you very much. Brad Froling, followed by Gail Kennedy.
Good afternoon. Thanks for your time today. I, my name is Brad Froling, and I've been a board member of Hillside House for a couple of years. I don't have any personal connections to the clients there, other than they're largely forgotten people, and they've been there for generations. And so, the predicament facing the Hillside House of basically the state, which is a large part of the funding, has required new levels of care in this form of integration. And we've looked, and a lot of my input initially was, let's resurrect the existing building, renovate it. And if you knew the number of meetings, and I've only been in a handful, the Hillside House has really struggled with this issue to see what the solution can be. And at this point, this project is our solution for financial sustainability long-term and to give the care that's required to continue to get the state funding. So, we've been in a real predicament. We're fortunate, we own the piece of land. It's a beautiful piece. And watching the architectural group, having been in the process almost seven years, a lot of meetings, a lot of feedback, understanding community concerns, but if you look at the changes made in the project that Lisa presented, it is very sensitive, and numerous changes have been made in the environmental side, the public access, the creek restoration, the dedicated open space. And so, we feel that it has integrity, and we're here with the motivation to basically preserve the care for this, this group of people. Thank you.
Thank you very much. The Kennedys have indicated that they would like to have their letter read, and I can assure you that we have read your letter. But if you'd like to read your letter to us, you're welcome to come up. Not seeing them coming forward. If the commissioners would please take the time to read the letter, that would be fine. And then, Mr. Kennedy, William Kennedy, says, "Project scale is excessive because density is extrapolated to include the unbuildable lot area." So, there's those comments, and the commissioners will read your letter. And any other public comment? Oh, good. Thank you. Okay. Shannon O'Brien, followed by Don Jones.
I wasn't planning on speaking, but I just heard a number that made me get on my little calculator and decide I had to come up. I've lived down the street from Hillside House for almost 30 years, and I just want to say that when you read on the website, it says they have 23 acres of trees, grassy fields, and a residential part of town, and a peaceful place to call home. And what I see is not going to continue that at all, and I think George Kuiper would be rolling in his grave if he saw this. Anyway, I, I understand the plight of Hillside House, and I'm all for them being able to sustain and be viable, but I have to agree with Ms. Arias that it's really important that financial disclosure be complete so we know this actually will be done, because you don't want to go in and ruin a great parcel of land and find out a few years down the road that this really wasn't looked at properly. So, that's a concern. Traffic is another one, of course, with parking. Only two cars per unit is provided, which doesn't really allow for the 20 or so cars parked there every day by the employees of Hillside House. And also, any guests or, you know, friends that would want to come and visit people that would be moving in here really should have parking allowed. The other thing is, I always hear five units per acre, and, you know, so much of the area is not buildable. I had done a computation that I got from acreage, 17 acres left out of the 23 that was going to be a conservation, conservation easement, which really is non-buildable land. And it leaves 5.26 acres for the 123 units, which is the density of 23 units per acre. But just earlier, it was noted that 77% is open land, and the homes are on 11% of the land, which translates to 2.53 acres, 48.6 acres of density. The homes on Veronica Springs, a lot have horses, chickens, you know, a lot of that in the backyard, two to three homes per acre max. Where I live, five per acre probably is, is more, because it's a tract. But I really have to point out that 46 units per acre is higher density than anything in Santa Barbara. And I just wanted to point that out.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks. Don Jones, and he will be our last speaker.
My name is Donald Jones. I live in the neighborhood. I've lived there over 30 years. My concern is that Hillside House has existed, of course, for a long time, and they do provide a service to the public. They've been, I'm not going to say invisible, but, you know, they haven't impacted the neighborhood. The clients don't wander around. There's no, no inconvenience to our neighborhood. But the Hillside House, as it has existed, has been a very good neighbor. This proposal, in my estimation, makes it a very poor neighborhood for us, a poor neighbor to us, because we've, maybe we've enjoyed something that is not to last. I don't know. But 30 years, I moved there from the Orange County area. Orange County grew, so I'm not, I'm not Orange County grew, so I'm not unknowing about growing. But our area is peaceful, quiet. Traffic is the only thing. I made a note on the paper there about traffic. We have a 35-mile zone on Veronica Springs. That road, the signing for it, the markings on the road, et cetera, have never been kept up by the county. Nobody knows it's a 35-mile zone, because they don't see the sign, or they don't see the markings on the road, which aren't there anymore since they repaved the street. So it turns into a shortcut for people, and they don't realize it's a neighborhood. Every morning, particularly, we get cars in groups of five. You can see them coming. It's the pace of it, groups of five, that are coming through as a shortcut, because of, they want to avoid Las Pecitas and Modoc. The intersection's kind of congested, if you drive at 8:00 in the morning. You know, it's extremely congested. So we have that kind of traffic cutting through from the mesa. And then, of course, in the evening, the reverse. It's a little more spread out in the evening. You can't really track it in packs of five. The density of this project is nowhere near compatible with the neighborhood. The lady just ahead of me, she had much better information than I do relative to numbers. I didn't do any research on this. I only heard about it three days ago, this project. So I've had no opportunity. But density right now, there's many, many properties there that only have one house on multiple acres. And where I live, I live on a half acre. All my neighbors on my portion of the street are half acres or larger.
You'll need to wrap up.
So I'm just saying, that is a real red light, a real noticeable thing in our neighborhood.
Thank you very much, sir. And Hakee Kilian?
I just wanted to make a few comments. You've all probably seen me up here before with the Valverde expansion request. Would just like to remind, or make the statement that we would like this to be SEQA-required. This EIR be looked at in conjunction with the other EIRs that are being done in the valley, any future expansion. They should all be looked at for cumulative effect on our transportation, our roads, our density, not to look at these as isolated incidences. I'm not as familiar with this project as I'd like to be, but I can say, just what I've read, three-story units don't seem to comply with the neighborhood compatibility, where terms of scale, design, and all that should be in character of the established neighborhood. I'd like to see a better baseline of the traffic on Veronica Springs. I don't, I drive that every day, several times a day. I've not seen any things across the road that count the traffic flow and where it's going. So I don't really know what you're using as your baseline. But we all know that this is going to add a lot more traffic to the valley, and I would like to ask that you really look at what's going on on Veronica Springs. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And I want to remind everyone that we're not taking an action on the project today. All we're doing is receiving information about the environmental document. So there won't be anything, any vote by us today regarding this project, just so you understand, and don't come with an expectation we can't fulfill. All right? And with that, questions from the commission, please. Very well. Mr. White, followed by Ms. Lodge.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Well, let's start with the last topic. It's come up a couple of times, and could I ask a couple of questions of Mr. Shell?
First of all, in looking over the traffic analysis, there was not a list of cumulative projects that we know are coming and so forth and so on, although I'm sure it's in your thinking. Could you describe where you are on that and how that goes forward from here?
Sure. Again, I'm Scott Shell with Associated Transportation Engineers. And really, what we've done so far is just do a preliminary analysis to assist staff in scoping the study. So we didn't go through and do an updated cumulative analysis. I do know that the Ellings Park EIR is soon to be on the street, and I think that's going to be, we're not involved in producing that, but I have been working with the park to see some of the early output on that. So I think that'll be your first look at the cumulative conditions within the valley, is going to be that EIR. Certainly, that EIR includes all of the projects that are proposed within the Las Pecitas corridor.
Right, okay. And then, so thank you. So we will be seeing that sometime soon, and that will apply to this project. And then, second was, and part of your report had called out a couple of mitigations that you point out could bring this project into, and maybe it's any of the projects of any scale in the valley, to be, their impacts to be mitigated. Are they, and I'm looking at page nine of the report, talks about widening the off-ramp as an example, and so forth. Are those, can you describe to us what those, where those projects are in the mix? Are they technical fixes at this point that have not been planned? Have they been planned? Where do you see them in terms of our future going forward?
I think I understand the question. One of the things that we did for this preliminary effort was to research existing documents that are prepared for other projects in the corridor. This goes back to what I remember as the Greenwell Acres Housing Project was on the corner of Modoc and Las Pecitas, that Colonel had done, as well as the Santa Barbara Christian School EIR, as well as the Veronica Meadows EIR, and the Cottage Hospital EIR. So all of these projects that have sort of polka-dotted across the scene identified these improvements as cumulative mitigation measures, and those EIRs required at a minimum of fair share or payment of the mitigation fees to implement some of those improvements. But as I understand it now, the city doesn't have anything really scheduled or planned or on the books. They just have been identified in previous work.
And then, let's see, and then, you just mentioned Mission and 101. Is there any, has that, was that considered in this work as a potential, would there be any potential impact of Mission, the Mission 101 intersections as well? Or is this too little traffic, too far away to be adding any trips to that?
You know, we did not scope that interchange in the work that we had done, but I think, you know, staff is certainly going to look at this when it comes time to scope the project and start getting proposals from the EIR consultant team. I think transportation is going to weigh in on that.
Okay, great. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Ms. Lodge, and then, Mr. Thompson.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm also very concerned about the traffic impacts, and something that puzzles me is looking at page 43 of the initial study. It gives several intersections, but the northbound Las Pecitas 101 intersections are not included. That surprised me. Certainly, they will be impacted, will they not?
Ask Scott about that.
Yeah, Lawson, members of the commission, we will be doing a full traffic study on this project. We will look at all the impacted intersections that this project would be generating traffic to.
Okay.
So we will include any impacted intersections. Well, we will look at all intersections that the project will be generating at least five trips to, according to the trip distributions in the traffic study.
And what about Valverde and Ellings Park?
We will include those cumulative projects. We will give a complete list of projects to the traffic consultant, all the ones we're aware of, including all of the ones in the Las Pecitas Valley, and a lot of the larger ones in the city itself.
Okay, thank you. Then, a couple of people have raised the issue of how the number of units per acre is calculated and what can be included in counting it. Mr. Lawson, perhaps you could respond to just how does the city calculate it if there is part of the property that isn't buildable in the first place?
Chair Lawson, Commissioner Lodge, we looked at both the DR, which is Design Residential, and the county. We looked at their density, as well as looking at how we calculate the density under city requirements. And, you know, you look at this slope density, you look, you take out the creek, that is the bottom line. You take the Arroyo Borough Creek out, but you would still include the slopes in the analysis, but you would look at a slope density. So once you move over, I think it's between 20 and 30%, you know, the amount of square foot per unit would increase. So the only thing we took out was the Arroyo Borough Creek, but everything else was included.
And still arrived at roughly the five units per acre?
Correct.
Okay. Then, there have been a couple of requests for a financial feasibility report. Is this something that will be looked at, or is this something that's ever considered as part of an EIR?
Chair Lawson, Commissioner Lodge, typically, economic impacts are not considered unless they result in a physical impact on the environment. So I would say, unless someone can show me how it would act and create a physical impact on the environment, we would not require a physical impact analysis in the EIR.
Good. Thank you. I think that pretty well covers the...
Okay, thank you very much. Commissioner Lodge, Commissioner Thompson?
Thank you. Will this traffic analysis, it's done as part of the environmental review, make use of the city's new and expensive traffic model?
Chair Lawson, Commissioner Thompson, transportation planning will have a large say in how the modeling is done. I don't believe that they'll be ready to use the general plan traffic model, but they may be using a lot of the data from the model. I am not sure yet, because I'm not the only one involved in determining how the model is, what model is used for the traffic study. It's transportation planning's call, and I don't see anyone here from transportation...
I recall when we talked about implementing this model, one of the points that we made and seemed to be affirmed was that when this model was up and running, we would be able to evaluate projects and have a very quick, real-time readout of the impacts to all the intersections in the city. And so, this would seem like an ideal location, with all the projects going in the Las Pecitas Valley, to implement the use of that model. Obviously, if it takes away from completing the general plan studies, that's a value judgment that would have to be made, but it would just seem to me that this is the kind of use for that model that would make a lot of sense.
Chair Lawson, Commissioner Thompson, I'll see to it that transportation is requested to use the model if it's available.
Thank you. Anything further at the moment?
No questions.
All right. In that case, Ms. Jacobs?
Thank you, Chair Larson. Hearing Commissioner Thompson's question, it was the same question I had, and I'm not completely happy with the response. Seems to me that we should be able to get a read for cumulative traffic in the Las Pecitas Valley using the traffic model. I believe this is exactly the kind of thing it was intended for. And short of requesting a program EIR for cumulative traffic in the Las Pecitas Valley, which would be a substantial undertaking, this model would be an ideal tool for anticipating what kind of traffic we could expect. So I'd like to make that a very, very strong request. The questions I have, what is the zoning of the immediate neighborhood? I mean, I hear people saying that they have one house per half acre, so that's a two houses per acre, but we're assigning five units to this. What kind of, we don't have an aerial view up, but I associate this area with kind of rural ranchette kind of spacing of housing, and five units per acre seems more than that.
Anybody got an answer?
If I could just have a minute?
Sure.
I'll come back to you on that.
Okay. As I said, that five units seems high, and the place that I'm going with this question is, if we have a chance for an alternative section, that we could look at what else could be built on this property, rather than 120 units, would 12 or 20 ranchette-style homes be something that we could look at as an alternative and see what the effects would that be if it's an environmentally superior alternative? Okay, got all those. And I am surprised that the aesthetic issues were considered to be kind of studied enough. The change in the look of the site will be rather substantial, so I'm surprised to see that aesthetics weren't on there. But I agree with the commission so far that traffic is the main thing that we will need to be focusing on, to really get a good idea of this project and what its effects will And regarding the question about financial analysis and how that does or does not fit into an EIR, I remember, and I'm sure we all do, when the St. Francis Hospital wanted to have zoning for office buildings, and that it was proposed based on the financial need of the hospital to have that office space, and that would make it a more successful hospital. Well, then, the hospital failed and is gone, and now there's this residual office space there. There's nothing that is considered an environmental impact connected to the project there if the proposal is based on financial feasibility?
Chair Lawson, members of the commission, I'll certainly give it some consideration and talk to staff about whether we could find a physical impact that would result. In the case of the hospital you mentioned, I assume, I'm not familiar with the case, that there was some physical impact that was expected if they didn't, if they weren't able to finance the project. So I, there may be some comments that come in from somebody that indicate that there would be some physical ramifications as a result of them not having sufficient funds, which I guess could trigger us asking for more financial data. It's, to me, a more of a planning issue. It's definitely an issue you may be interested in, that they would be financially viable, but it's not, in my understanding, at present, a, an environmental issue.
Madam Chair.
Mr. Vincent?
The comment that I heard from the public was not so much directed at the financial feasibility of the project being built, but more at the financial feasibility underlying the applicant's desire to initiate the project. I don't see any environmental effect associated with the applicant's desire to create their endowment or fund their endowment. When we get to a potential environmental effect, SEQA gives us a couple examples in their guidelines. For example, a project that involves the construction of a new freeway that bisects a community, that has economic effects if it disturbs the typical traffic patterns within that community and disrupts a commercial zone. It has social effects on that kind of, on that community. These are the kinds of economic and social effects that SEQA has anticipated, having environmental consequences that need to be evaluated. Whether or not an applicant has the financial feasibility to do the project, what I would suggest is that you look at the short-term impacts of the project not going forward and consider mitigations if the project dies. However, the question of, we just... mitigations if the project dies. However, the question of, we just don't get into the economics of the projects just because we question them. The applicants have to decide for themselves whether they're going to go forward with the project. There's no applicant that decides, that starts a project without the expectation of finishing it. There's no upside to getting halfway through a project. And so, I heard the public comment, and again, I'll reiterate my point about that. The question, the underlying question of why the applicant is doing this project in order to fund their endowment, I don't see an environmental effect there. If the question concerns what happens if the project doesn't get completed, then let's look at that as mitigations associated with the temporary impacts of the project. Doesn't necessarily, I mean, those temporary impacts could be dealt with, we have plenty of conditions with those. So, that's where I, those are my thoughts on that topic.
Thanks for that guidance.
Thank you.
So, we look at this as a development, and we look at straight-up development. Thank you.
All right. Commissioner Bartlet, please.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Unfortunately, I wasn't on the Commission when you had the three concept reviews back in 2004. And I guess my question is, what types of alternatives have been considered so far, or could we consider as we move forward? Was there any discussion in terms of mitigating traffic by the inclusion of a small little corner store or convenience market or something, since this is such a remote location? I mean, what things have been talked about to date? So, I'm not, you know, opening Pandora's Box, but I think we want to have some alternatives as we move forward into an EIR. So, were there alternatives identified to this point, or is this just the start?
Madam Chair, Commissioner Bartlet, the overall development has always been just residential with the community building as part of the project. I think at one time, they were thinking about 170 residential units, and then it came down to this number. So, short answer is residential and then support for the hillside folks, but no commercial.
Thank you.
You have your light on, too. Mr., sorry, are you?
Well, Mr. White and I were on the Commission at that time, so he's...
Oh, okay.
Probably thinking the same thing. I just, I wanted to say that Commissioner Bartlet guesses correctly. At one time during concept review, we did talk about having a neighborhood market, a kind of farmer's stand produce convenience idea, enhanced transit to serve this population. But, there was always the sort of weirdness of not really putting something in an existing neighborhood, but essentially building a neighborhood around it and trying to guess what might be needed. But, I don't think we ever got as far in the past as we are today.
Mr. White, and then Ms. Lodge.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I would first of all ask that it might have been helpful for, if staff had included, just for orientation of people who weren't on board then, to have gotten the concept review stuff, just to lay the groundwork, understanding that we're dealing with environmental document. But, my recollection is that we, that the discussion that Ms. Jacobs mentioned of lower dense, of just sort of quantitative, qualitatively different project, was at least discussed by the Commission as other ideas, just in the conceptual stage.
Thank you. Anything else, Ms. Jacobs? Okay, Ms. Lodge?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Aren't alternatives required to be included in an EIR?
Chair Larson, members of the Commission, alternatives will be looked at in the EIR. Typically, the way the process works is we prepare all the analysis and find out what the significant impacts are, and we try to come up with alternatives that would address those significant impacts, potentially significant and unmedicable preferably. So, yes, if we think that a market will help mitigate the impacts, we may consider it, but there may be some other issues, and we'll talk about it as a team regarding whether it would be financially, if it would work, you know, who's going to want to have a market if they can't sell enough stuff? So, there's a financial concern.
Thank you. And I just wanted to remind everybody, there is the commercial zoning at Las Pecitas and Modoc, which I know is not exactly a convenient walking distance from Hillside House, but it certainly is in the neighborhood. And I don't know if there are any market services there.
I can tell you that I have, I live in that area, and I have seen the forced march of many families from Henry's Beach off in the wrong direction to look for food. And they get mighty hot as they near that, that, that commercial complex. And the kids are unhappy, and the dad's forging ahead, and the mother, you can just read her face. And they're all carrying their towels. So, it's a long walk to any services if you get launched in the wrong direction.
Madam Chair.
Mr. Vincent, was that you?
No.
No.
No, but I did eat at the Boathouse last night, and it's very good.
Good.
The, what I wanted to comment on is I saw a couple of the Commissioners quizzically wondering why all of a sudden we're considering about the economics of a mitigation, yet we're not considering the economics of the project or the fundamentals of the project. And it goes to this point. The alternatives are supposed to be a reasonable range of feasible alternatives. And so, the economics issue comes back to the feasibility. So, if the mitigation is not economically feasible, if the, as Mr. Berman explained, if the produce stand just doesn't make it and no longer exists, all of a sudden, your mitigation is gone. You haven't mitigated the impact, and technically, you'd have to go back and try to figure out a new mitigation. So, you don't want to be chasing after ghosts in your mitigations. You want a reasonable range, in other words, a reasonable number of mitigations. Those mitigations have to be feasible, not only technically, economically, but also they have to meet the project's goals. Remember that as well when you're thinking and suggesting the, your range of mitigations, is that they're not just taken from thin air. They're supposed to meet the majority of the project's goals, so that you're still comparing apples and apples, as opposed to apples and oranges.
Thank you. Yes, you may.
Just a quick update on that whole theory of corner markets. There, out in Goleta, there was the Marvia project was built, and part of its mitigation was to build a little fruit stand. Tootie Fruity Farms ran it for a while, didn't turn out to be economically feasible. It's gone now. Now, it's been turned into a wine storage, which actually is a traffic attractant. So, it's gone exactly the opposite of how it was originally intended as a mitigation. So, if, I'll just anticipate that if that one gets suggested as a mitigation, that we might want to look at what happened to the one in, at the Marvia.
Thank you. Mr. White?
My last question to staff, the, on the slope density ordinance, when the prop, when land exceeds, goes over 30 percent in slope, is there, where does that go in terms of slope density? If it goes, if it's over 30, there's, is there a category for over 30? Is there a category for over 40? Or is it just everything over 30 is lumped into one category?
Chair Larson, Commissioner White, correct. Over 30 is the final line in a sense. So, 20, below 20, 20, 30, and then over 30, three categories.
Oh, zero to 10, there's nothing, zero to 10 is...
Zero to 10 is...
Is one to one.
Is one to one.
And then 10 to 20, and then 20 to 30, and then over 30. And is there a, does the city have a development, you're not allowed to develop a slope?
They, I know what you're thinking, and the county is, shall, is, should not.
All right. Thank you. It's nice having Mr. Lawson here who can shift over from one to the other. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any further questions? My concerns were creek, traffic, and financial feasibility, but that's been put to rest. So, I don't have any other questions. They've all been answered. So, any other, any comments from the...
Are you ready for comments?
Yeah. Mr. Thompson, you ready to comment?
Sure, I'll start off.
Thank you.
Comments about the environmental scoping. Obviously, this project has many commendable aspects that are environmental, for example, the creek restoration and open space preservation. And certainly, the care of the residents is a commendable goal, although not necessarily an environmental issue. But, it is an intense use compared to the existing uses in the neighborhood. And as we've discussed about the traffic, other planned uses in the immediate area are going to have to be considered on a cumulative basis. So, my three main areas that I think we really need to evaluate, number one is the drainage. And while it seems that the plans as proposed for drainage have taken care of that issue and have proposed adequate mitigation, we're going to have to validate that and look at it in more detail. As mentioned, neighborhood compatibility is an issue that must be evaluated, and certainly, the big swinger is traffic. We're going to have to come up with some mitigation measures to deal with what appears to be a significant traffic impact. So, those are my comments.
Thank you. Mr. Thompson, Mr. White?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Well, I agree with, I thought Mr. Thompson, as usual, did an excellent job of summarizing the, what, where we're at and the benefits and downsides of the project. I would add these to it. Water, that we have an existing use on site of around five acre feet, and we're going to 32 acre feet, something like that. And I put that in the context of Charter Section 1507, and this is an annexation project. It's not a part of the city. So, we need to look at this as we're going forward as, are we able to provide water to the rest of the city, to all the residential and commercial that potential that we have in the city, and then add this to it. I expect one day, and maybe one day soon, that when annexations from Goleta Water District to city occur, that there will, that there will be more horse trading that will go on, so that that five acre feet of existing use, it may be it gets split or something. We start to negotiate with Goleta and not just take over the use, the providing of a scarce resource. So, I would like to see that as part of the, of every document moving forward on this project. This is a living within our resources issue, and water, once again, with the Zachifier really being imposing a danger to the Gibraltar Reservoir, and the issue about use, whether we're going to use DSal as a base use every day, or are we going to only use it as backup? The whole water question is a very serious one. I did not see anywhere in here where the wastewater disposal occurs for the existing project. Is it on septic now? It's on city sewer. It's on the city sewer system. Okay. So, that's just not in the city, but using the city sewer. Third is transit. I see we have a transit stop there, but what I want to know, what I want to be comfortable with is that we have, that this is a robust transit location. This is one where the headways are respectable, that it's not one of the routes that's at risk. We're hearing stories of, there are stories of as our income diminishes, we're going to need to triage our transit system. And I want to be reassured that this is a bona fide transit stop and part of a transit system ongoing. I appreciated Ms. Ariz's comment about knowing bedrooms, this being an unusual project in that it's got some semi-group home kind of situations there. This, we, as the project is defined more clearly, we'd like to hear just how, how that's, whether units have an unusual number of bedrooms, or whether it's basically a standard unit or not. I think, I asked my, sort of my nuts and bolts questions about, about traffic earlier, and clearly, that is a concern going forward. So, and thank you, Mr. Thompson, for, as I say, your customary clear and concise summary of the concerns.
Thank you very much, Mr. White. Any other comments? Oh, good. Mr. Bartlet, and then Ms. Lodge.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Well, I think the major ones have certainly been touched on. I would really like to see the sustainability aspect of this project analyzed. I mean, you've kind of danced around all the topics, you know, the water and sewer and this and that. Is there the opportunity for this project to tie into the city's reclaimed water system? I'm not sure if it comes up Las Pecitas, because I know it goes to the golf course and other things. So, I think we want to explore other opportunities for sustainability, both in reclaimed water and what other options are out there. Also, I would like to have the employee parking issue really addressed seriously, because we've seen this in other projects, and it's been quite the hot topic. And I noticed, you know, when we were on our site trip, I think this project is pretty intense on employee level. You know, there's a lot of care going on. So, we just want to make sure that that's accurately portrayed in the traffic analysis and that we've got it covered. And those are the main two, other than the ones that have already been mentioned. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Ms. Lodge?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm sure this is going to be included, but nobody has said its name. Veronica Springs Road, of course, is going to be highly impacted by what happens here. And I assume it will be covered in the, in the analysis. Okay. I don't have anything further to add. I think we've pretty much...
Thank you very much.
...is needed.
Thank you. Okay. Any final comments? Any questions from staff or comment to, in response to anything we've got going? No?
Madam Chair, just a question about zoning. Currently, the site is within the county is 4.6 units per acre, and surrounding that is about five units per acre.
You know, I don't know if this is considered a mitigation unit or not, but we, on our field trip there, we were, we were shown what, some overnighting for staff opportunities. And if that could be a mitigation of some sort, having some employee housing or something like that, I would certainly look, look at that.
Madam Chair, I forgot to mention that, but that was one of the key objectives, was be able to provide some rental housing and maybe even ownership housing for those employees at Hillside House.
Thanks. All right. So, no further questions? All right. Now, folks sitting out there, what happens next is that there's a comment period that'll come out, and maybe Mr. Lawson can describe and tell you how to contact the city regarding EIR. It's mostly waiting right now. And go ahead, Peter, if you don't mind. Next steps and how they can find out what to do next.
Okay. We're in the middle of the comment period right now for our scoping document. So, I just asked members of the public to review the attached initial study where we run through all the impacts that the project may generate. You can go ahead and comment on that up until Thursday, October 15th, 4:30. And send comments in writing to me at P O Box 1990, Santa Barbara, 93102. Or, you can email me at PLawson@SantaBarbaraCA.gov.
Thank you very much. And know that when you submit public comment letters, we do see them. So, if they're emailed to the city, they're emailed to us as well, forwarded. And we read everything. I can't believe how much we read, but we read it all. Okay. So, that concludes this particular agenda item. So, we thank you for coming, and we thank you for your concerns, and thank you for your presentation. And we'll move into our administrative agenda. Committee and liaison reports. Anybody? Nope. Okay. I don't have a staff hearing officer report, so... So with that-
I have one little comment, Madam Chair.
Great.
And that is that Ms. Lott and I attended yesterday the opening of the Mercy Housing Project, which is just one of those things to be proud of for the region. It's a collaborative project amongst many entities, private funders, county and city funders, faith-based funders. And I did not take the tour afterwards, maybe Ms. Lott did and can comment on it. I did do a little drive around before I left, and I just found that it looked like there was a remarkable amount of better quality work. Usually, these things, when they, you make it look pretty on a, on a piece of paper, and then they end up running out of money when it comes to window treatments and so forth. And then particularly, the rehab of the creek looked like it was really a beautiful sight to behold, and maybe people have driven by. But it was a, I think there's, I won't get the number exactly right, but it's something like 175 units. It's got a children's daycare. It's got a whole cafeteria of services and activities that it's providing to the community. It's an enormous asset to the community.
Thank you very much. Ms. Lott, and then-
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Jacobs.
Yes, I did, I did have an opportunity to look at one of the senior units, which is in a, the senior units are all in a very large building that wraps around the administrative center, sort of on one side of the project. And the unit that I looked at is being lived in by a woman who lived on the streets in her van for 11 years. And she's the woman who started the van parking program here in Santa Barbara, where she, she pushed it and got it started. And it's, it's small, but it's, she's very happy to be there and very attractive. They also have a program of, they have family housing, that, you know, low-income family housing, and as well, they have a PATH program, which is for single moms with children from zero to five. And it's a two-year program. They have to, they have to be interviewed before they can get into it, but they have people there who, women who are doing their GED, their high school finishing, their high school requirements, there's someone there who's finishing her masters. And they provide food and all kinds of, you know, individual counseling, group counseling. It's really a great program to help make these, these women and their children to be sustainable. And, you know, and if they can't quite make it in the two years, they don't like to give an extension, but they will if, you know, they need, need more time there. It's a, it's kind of an interesting, the physical setup is interesting there. Each one has a bedroom, a little bit larger. There's one woman there with twins with, that are eight months old, so she's got a little bit, slightly larger room. And then there's the, a big sort of communal room and a large kitchen, and then another space that's got a refrigerator for each one of the people there. They tried sharing, and that didn't work too well. So, but that, that really looks like an excellent program. So they're doing a variety of things there and providing housing for those in need, as well as services.
Thank you very much. Ms. Jacobs?
On a different topic, just an announcement, that it's First Thursday downtown, and that people can head downtown and grab a parking space in the Granada Garage, and then walk up and down State Street and see the art galleries and the music performances.
Thank you very much. And I'm reminded, for those of us interested in children, that the Granada Theater is going to be presenting Mary Poppins. I believe it's November 13th. So that would be a delightful thing. Bring your umbrella. All right. Thank you very much. And with that, we are adjourned.